The views, information, and opinions expressed during the following program are solely those of the individuals involved and do not necessarily represent the views of Access Communications, its representatives, or its employees.
We'll call this regular council meeting of December 12th to order. First of all, on the agenda, under presentations, we have none this evening. Could I have a motion, please, to adopt the agenda as presented? Councillor Frank, seconded by Councillor Sernick, ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Next, could I have a motion, please, to adopt the minutes of the council meeting held on November 28th? Okay, thank you. Councillor Clark, seconded by Councillor Vroba, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Next, under original communications, delegations, and petitions, we have Wade St. Onch here this evening. Welcome. And Jody, I don't think, is she hiding under the desk or didn't make it tonight?
Oh, that's actually Jody, the male, male Jody.
Oh, male Jody.
But he is not here, it's just me.
Okay, okay, so you're doing the work of two men tonight?
Well.
Okay, that's great, please take it away.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate you accepting my request to be on council tonight. So I'm representing the Estevan Minor Softball Board, and we have six diamonds, I hate to say "we" have six diamonds, the city has six diamonds in the Pleasantdale area between Sacred Heart and Pleasantdale School. I say "our" diamonds because we're the main tenants, and we're in a partnership with the city, and have been for years, with regards to those diamonds. And periodically, we do upgrades, and there are some, we've kind of come up with a plan to do some upgrades that I think are very much overdue, and also very important for achieving certain goals that we want to achieve. I think there's, I'll just discuss what our plan is, first of all, and just before I do, just the three main reasons for why we want to do what we want to do. First of all, two of our six diamonds have been essentially left to wreck and ruin for a number of years because they just weren't used. But our numbers have grown so much that we need all six diamonds, and they are all in use for most of the ball season. So we need to take care of some overdue things on those diamonds. The second thing is safety. Right now, there are some real safety concerns with regards to the diamonds, and I'll discuss those in a moment, too. Most of these things have to do with safety, improve safety. And the third thing is our goal to have a Western Championship here. Obviously, baseball just had it this summer. Great success. The two things that we heard were, first of all, great hosts, which we usually hear when we have events here, and the second thing was great facilities. I think when people come here, they think, "Oh, a city of 11,000, what are they going to have?" But I think we blow a lot of people away, and I'd like to see the same thing with softball, that's our goal. Let's have a Western Championship here and do the same thing in softball. So the last, I guess, major upgrade we did was in 2016 with the Summer Games, so we did a few things there. We got the scoreboard on our primary diamond, and then we got a booth, a booth there, a scorer's booth, where we put in a P.A. system and the like. And we haven't really done much since then, and there's really some things that we see as being necessary if we're going to host a Western Championship, and also because of to take care of safety concerns. So I'll just begin with the first one, which is fencing. We're going to need to do something about the fencing. All six of our diamonds, they have a backstop, 16-foot-high backstop, and then there's a gap between the backstop and the dugouts, and some of the diamonds are only three feet. And so that's an issue because the bleachers aren't necessarily enough room for everybody, and people sit, they bring their own lawn chairs, and they sit on the sides. And for line drives, that's very dangerous for not only the spectators there, but also children, a lot of times run around and play there. So that's an issue there, too. On, I would say, half the diamonds, we also have, the fencing only goes up three feet high in front of the dugouts, and that's a serious safety concern. Some of those foul balls get hit so hard that, that, the players have been hit, and sometimes quite seriously. And there was, I think it was about three, four years ago, we had a player that was hit with a foul ball. This was a U-19 player, and she got hit so hard, and it was such a scare, she actually went to the hospital. So we need to, we need to make sure that people in the dugouts are protected. We also wanted to extend the fences up from three feet to six feet high towards the rest of, especially on two of the diamonds, our primary diamonds. So the diamond that we've done the most work to has been U-19, U-15 diamond, that's our showcase diamond, and then we have one diamond that is sort of our primary diamond for the U-13 and U-11. And so we'd like to raise those to six feet high all around and lock those up. So we want to keep those diamonds in great shape, but lock those two up especially. The rest of the diamonds, obviously, a lot of members of the public access them, and we want to encourage them to continue to do that, but those two diamonds, we would like to just reserve for us, for the most part. Obviously, the two diamonds that have been neglected, the south diamonds, that's where we're going to have to, since we're doing this work on all the diamonds anyway, that the standardized at the six-foot fences and then the eight-foot sections along where the spectators sit, we're planning to do that as well when we're doing the further work on the south diamonds that need to be done as well. So that will be a little more because those backstops need to be repainted, and they need to be refenced, work that had been done on the other diamonds, but we haven't done there. So that's the primary thing, is the fencing, and it's mainly a safety issue. The second thing is the dugouts. So when they were first constructed, they were quite small, four by 16, so the small, the, I guess, U-13 and below, the diamonds there on the dugouts are quite tiny. It's hard to maneuver in there, and even the ones that have the, where the U-15s, U-19s play, six by 20, I think they are now, even then it's tight. So what we were hoping to do was have them all standardized. We would like them to take those dugouts and just pull them back, and then also extend them wider. And so we have to have, we're looking at whole new diamonds on the south diamonds because they're a whole new dugout, because they're all, well, they're the original dugouts, and the others have been replaced, but those ones definitely needed. So there's, so there's a couple of new dugouts we're looking at and modification to the existing ones. And again, I just want to let you know, some of this work we can do ourselves, and we have done ourselves. So I just want to let you know that wherever we can save costs, we're doing it, and whatever work that we can do, we'll do it. There's also looking at the addition of bullpens. So right now, that's another issue, too, is that we have to, pitchers are warming up, we're sending them out to the outfield, and so you have to have, by rule, a spotter, somebody has to be watching, make sure the balls don't get to them. But the problem is, sometimes the pitchers get overthrown, and so the spotter can actually be in danger of being hit by a ball as well. And so you're almost to the point where you want two spotters down there, but now all of a sudden, you're putting four people from your benches out there. So we were going to construct bullpens just outside the, just outside the dugouts, kind of what they have at Lynn Prime, something similar to that. I'll also speak about the canteen that we did some upgrades on already. So we invested a little bit of our money, and we wanted to create a couple of, obviously the health inspector said we had to paint the floor, we have to have a triple sink instead of a double sink, those kinds of things, and again, that's work we did on our own, so that's already taken care of. And then the installation of a couple of sheds, eight by 12 sheds. So right now, we have one shed which has all our equipment, and one of the problems is you have to, you know, going back and forth, like, long distance, back and forth, as, you know, those, and the coaches, of course, that prep the diamonds, they've been hoping for a better system for a while, but also the clutter, it's just, things get disorganized, it's a tripping hazard in there. So we wanted to create so that each pair of diamonds, which are essentially designated according to age group, will have their own equipment, and it's easier to access and easier to take care of and easier to keep track of. We were also looking at the possibility of a sheltered area, like a canopy outside the canteen. One of the, we don't know the exact size, maybe a 20 by 40 area. I know they had one set up, a temporary one set up for when they had that showcase here in the summer, so there's very little shade there. And when we have these tournaments here, and we have one every year because the, our league play, our league winds up, we have these youth, and coaches, and umpires, and sometimes it can be 30 degrees. And one of the things that happens is there's a lot of, there's a lot of people that go down because of the heat. You can drink water and drink water, but if you don't get out of the heat, you're going to go down, so we've had a lot of players go down because they just can't find shade. And that would also be good if you have an event, any kind of event, or any kind of doubleheader on weekends with the competitive teams, to have that there for players and any of the spectators there, for food or the like. It's just, a lot of other communities have that, so we were looking at that as well. As far as the cost of this goes, what we decided to do is sort of split them into three phases. The first phase was this year, and that's work that we were able to do, we had the money for it, and the work was done by ourselves. The phase two is what we're planning for, for next year, and a lot of that fencing work that we're planning to get done, but not all of it. For instance, there's no home run fences on the south diamonds, they're just rails. So originally, that's the way it was, and we never needed to add those, but if we host a Western Championship, then they're going to expect that to be done. So that's phase two, and then phase three are all of the things that are a lower priority, but still things that we'd like to do. Currently, phase two, the estimate that we have is about $65,000. We would like to enter into an agreement with the city or some kind of partnership where the city would be willing to match us dollar for dollar. We have, we've done well the past number of years, so we have in our reserves enough to cover that if we were, if we were to enter into that kind of arrangement. And then phase three is something that we'll deal with when the time comes, but we're really concerned with getting phase two done at this time. So that's our plan for the diamonds, and we were hoping to see if the city would support us in that.
Okay, well, thank you for that, Wade. We'll open the floor for any comments from members of council. Councillor Clark.
Thanks, Your Worship. Congratulations on your, running your minor softball. I know that it's growing, and I hear the numbers are getting bigger, and that's another, that's a good problem to have, to have more people wanting, wanting to use it. Certainly, you have to have a volunteer, a volunteer group there, and this community will step forward. I certainly think that city should be a partner with you on this, and obviously, it's budget time, so we're probably going to refer to budget and talk about it, but I think it's great to see what's going on. Could you give us some of the numbers of the amount of kids that are playing softball at this time, and are the number of teams, whatever you could, and what it looks like for this year? Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Councillor Clark. So I guess one thing I'd like to mention as part of my answer is, I want, I think there, there's maybe, I think most people understand, but I think there's a lack of understanding in some areas as far as how ball is structured in Estevan. So we do, we do have two separate associations. We have Estevan Minor Ball, which is baseball, and then we have Estevan Minor Softball, which is us. And so in some cities, they all fall under the same category. So I just wanted to clarify that anybody who's uncertain of that, any money that goes to softball doesn't go to baseball, any money that goes to baseball doesn't go to softball. Also, essentially, and I believe the numbers in baseball are about maybe 300 youth, I'm guessing, we have about 200, so I think the total number of probably youth that play ball in Estevan is about 500. And most of the ones that play baseball are boys, with a few exceptions, there's a few girls that play, and most of the ones that play in softball are girls with a few boys, a few exceptions. But that's why I'd say our numbers are at, it's about 200, so 500 kids playing ball, 200 are girls, 300 are boys, and that's a good thing.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Frank.
Thanks, Your Worship, and yes, I'm kind of very complimentary to Councillor Clark's remarks. I'm very grateful for all the work you've put in thus far, which is fantastic that your group has donated so much to our community, and I do, was kind of thinking the exact same thing with budget just being right at the, this is kind of the perfect time that we can certainly have that review to budget, but I certainly would be looking at it favorably myself, but yeah, add it to the budget discussion, so.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Frank. Councillor Ford.
Thanks, Your Worship, and just a note to that, in speaking to what Wade had said about even the bullpens and everything else, if you drive down Welllick Road on Monday to Friday during the softball season, there's cars lined up down the streets, there's cars in that parking lot so full that it's almost impossible to walk, and some of the kids are actually warming up to pitch in the parking lot, and it's very, very unsafe, and some of that fencing would be really, really useful to be able to actually, you know, contain the kids in a safe spot instead of having them practice on the road and risk getting hit as well.
Absolutely, thank you. Go ahead, Councillor Vroba.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you for coming this evening, and I, too, appreciate the volunteer hours that you and all of the other volunteers in Estevan Baseball and Estevan Softball provide our community and our children. I was just wondering if we can maybe refer this back to our management team and get a bit of a report going with, just to see the numbers of what we've actually given to softball in the last previous year, and also baseball, and then if we could also see, again, in budget, if we could just maybe see what we could look at doing, because I know, like, with you guys, you have three phases, I wrote down, so your first phase is done with a lot of your own sweat work, and the second phase would be $65,000. So if the city didn't have the full 30, say 32,000, if we matched you dollar for dollar, would it still be possible for you to do some of that work this year and then move some of it into next year?
Yeah, Councillor Frank, thanks for your kind words, and Councillor Ford, obviously, she's coached there for numbers, so she knows firsthand the issues. Councillor Vroba, there's obviously, I think we have just a sort of a list, what's number one priority, priority two, priority three, so some of this work can be done, just not all of it. And so with, with some kind of, with some kind of funding or some kind of arrangement, we could do all of this, what we want to do this year, but if that's not possible, we'll do whatever our top priorities are, and the top priorities really are about the safety.
Okay, thank you, and I think Rod, a lot of that proposed is already in the budget, correct? So it's already there, Councillor Vroba? In the budget.
Their entire wish list is in the budget?
The 30-some thou is in the budget. Go ahead, city manager.
Thank you, Your Worship, I can speak to this. So Rod said to Cyvis some turf management money every year in an amount of $80,000, depending on his priorities, but there is an allocation there that if different organizations come with requests like this, that there is a contingency in there, and I believe what they're asking for would be within the contingency that is within the budget so far.
So he could allow that to get fit, Rod could fit that into the existing budget.
So then, basically, thank you for coming tonight, it looks like your wish list was granted.
Okay, not seeing any more questions, thank you so much, Wade, for coming. Councillor Frank always likes to have a final parting comment, so, Councillor Frank.
I believe, I believe Councillor Vroba usually gets the final parting comment, not me, but actually, I was just going to say, I don't know if that then requires a motion or recommendation from council to go ahead and use, but if, if, if we can do that within Rod's existing budget, obviously, we can still look at those final numbers, but if we are able to complete that within what was kind of already proposed to us, then I would be favorable to do this, and I would make that motion.
Okay, you'd be willing to make that, okay, thank you. Councillor Frank, and go ahead, Councillor Clark.
Thanks, Your Worship. I just, I encourage your group to come here, and I think part of it is, there's a community out there that supports everything in town. They may well come forward and allow you to get phase three done as well as phase two, so I'm glad that we can partner with you and get that done, and do that, but if there's community groups or sponsors that are out there, I hope they'll come forward and let you move on to the full, to the full part of your phases, phase three as well.
Okay, thank you. Jill's second.
I'll make, I'll make that second for sure.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Clark. Okay, any further questions or comments, ready for the question, all in favor? Carrie, there you go, Wade, you've had a very successful night.
Well, thank you, Your Worship, I.
Merry Christmas.
All right, yes, thank you very much.
No problem, thank you for coming.
All right, thank you.
And tell Jody we'll look for him next time.
Oh, he's going to come do it on his own next time.
Oh, okay, good for you, good for you. Okay, thank you. Again, you're more than welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. Usually, for some reason, we don't have a lot of people that take us up on that, but again, you're more than welcome. Okay, moving on, under original communications, delegations, and petitions, we have the GFL cart report for November of 2022. Could I have a motion, please, for that? Councillor Wally, sir, thank you. Have we got a second, or, thank you. Councillor Sernick, ready for the question? All in, or, did you have a question? Oh, okay, you're a keeter, you're a keeter. Okay, ready for the question, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Next, under original communications, delegations, and petitions, we have the Southeast Regional Library fees for 2024. Who would like to take this on? Councillor Vroba.
Thank you, Your Worship, yes, that's the per capita that was set at the regional meeting in October, so I will make the recommendation that we receive this.
The motion that we accept, follow the recommendation, okay, thank you, Councillor Vroba. Have we got a second, or, Councillor Sernick? Thank you, ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie? Okay, next, under written reports of committees, we have the Estevan Public Library Minutes of November 15th. Do we have a motion to accept these? Councillor Ford, thank you. Seconder. How about going with Councillor Wally, sir, over there, right on. Ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Next, under executive reports, we have the Food and Beverage Report on private rental of Affinity Lounge, and I see we have our manager here who has graciously agreed to attend. Thank you, Diane, have you got any comments you'd like to impart before we discuss this further?
Not a lot, there is such a controversy of whether we should rent out the lounge privately, especially through Bruins games, or not, because no matter which way we do, we're going to have somebody angry, right? The people that sit in the lounge every day at a Bruins game are then not allowed to go sit in the Bruins game if it's a private, so.
Yeah, we do have our people like Cheers, like Norm, that love to come and sit, and they, they get quite upset when.
Yes, they do.
When we have a private gathering, that's very true.
That's very true, so it's six of one and half a dozen of the other, so it's kind of a decision that we thought we should bring to council to see what your thoughts are, because as a management group, where we're at leisure, we really couldn't come with a decision.
Okay, so we have a recommendation, which I'm sure, Diane, you would agree, the recommendation is to increase the rental rate and then have a minimum food and beverage fee. That way, we would be guaranteed a total of $1,000 on a weekday, excuse me, and $1,500 on the weekend. Is that correct? You're, you're fine with that?
Yes, I am fine with that, and that people can also come in and get a drink, and take it to their skybox, or take it down to sit in the bowl.
Okay, so we would have also the understanding that anyone that was in the sky boxes could come at any time, and we'd have that pathway open to come and get a drink and.
That is correct.
Take it back.
That is correct.
Thank you for that. Okay, we'll open the floor to members of council. Go ahead, Councillor Sernick, please.
Thank you, Your Worship, thanks for coming tonight. I guess, first question, I do have a couple of questions. Have we had any dialogue with the Bruins prior to this about the?
No, we have not. The Bruins, when the, when the lounge is used during a Bruins game for a private rental, they sell 50 tickets.
Which, which comes out to $850.
Okay, they, doesn't mean they're putting 50 people in the lounge. There are times that it's a private rental, and there'd be maybe 10 or 15 people in the lounge, so then the patrons that are wanting to sit in the lounge are going, "Why is it empty?" So.
Okay, so we haven't had any dialogue. Is there anything in the contract with the Bruins that involves Crescent Point Lounge?
Not that I understand.
City manager, I don't think so.
No, thank you, Councillor Sernick, no, we just finalized that, there's nothing that speaks to lounge in the contract.
If, if you like, Councillor Sernick, we can hold this in abeyance till the next meeting, and we can get input from the Bruins if you'd rather do that.
I, yeah, I would like to make the motion just to table it, and obviously, have dialogue with the Bruins and work together on this. Sure that there's something that's simpler, that can be, you know what I mean, if they're going to be charged $1,000 and only make $850, they're probably not going to do it anymore. So it's just a situation where I just think some dialogue together would be better.
Okay, thank you. Have we got a second, or, Councillor Vroba?
Yeah, I would second on table this, too, because of the fact that I think the deal would be $1,000, we'd basically come to the city, $850 would go to the Bruins, so that's $1,850 that we would be asking someone to pay to rent the lounge, but yet, then allow people to come and go. So that's a lot of money to be spending, to then allow other people to come in and out of there, because at some times, they're, especially during an intermission or the end of the period, you could have 15, 20 extra people in that lounge. So if I did rent that lounge, and I had 50 people in there of my own, and then I had 10 or 15 more people come in, I probably wouldn't feel like I was getting my $1,850 worth, so I think definitely we need to have the input of the Bruins, and with Councillor Sernick on that board, I would like to hear what they have to say.
Okay, thank you, and Councillor Clark, had you had your hand up?
Thanks, Your Worship. Yeah, I've got a concern, certainly on the cost, I think that's a substantial amount. I think we go out and we ask people to sponsor different things within the rink. I think there probably should be something for those people that are sponsors within that rink that they don't have to pay, that they, they sort of get rewarded for their time, that we have a different rate for people that are sponsors within the rink, that they could get that, and I do find that that's quite a substantial jump in the rental rate.
Okay, thank you, all good points. Councillor Ford.
Thanks, Your Worship. Are we able to do a little bit of research into some of the other rinks in Saskatchewan or Manitoba, Alberta, who have similar kind of setups with their, their rinks and their lounges, and see what they do as well, just to kind of have a little bit of a comparison, please?
Sure, we could do that, you know, Wayburn comes to mind, city manager, maybe a few others of like size.
Thank you, Your Worship, I don't think Wayburn has a specific lounge outside their boxes, there's a survey area, but it's not a, you wouldn't be able to have a private lounge area.
It's not quite the same, good point, okay, but we could check with like-sized communities, a couple of them, I'm sure we could do that. Okay, okay, if we're all ready then to, to table a motion, those in favor, to table, thank you very much. We will table till the next meeting, and in the interim, we'll try to check out and get some more information. Thank you, Diane, for coming, appreciate it. Okay, next, under executive reports, we have from the Water Services Manager, the Water Quality Report. Shane was unable to make it. Shane was unable to make it here tonight, but basically, we treated 93,120,500 liters of water, and we pumped 90,634,600 liters into the distribution system for the month. There were no plant upsets, and all regulated parameters for drinking water were met. During our biannual water security inspection for the water treatment and distribution system, it was discussed about our accidents on operational guideline on 100 UGs per liter of aluminum. Now, our aluminum was a little bit high, but now we've got that back, you know, meeting the guidelines, so that's a good thing. The maximum allowable concentration for aluminum is 2,800 UG per liter, and we were nowhere near that exceedance. Once we became aware of the problem, we had it improved, that we are either under the guidelines or just at that point. We had looked at using a different coagulant, but that has a higher risk of environmental impact that the Water Security Agency was not favorable to. They have agreed to an amendment to the permit to operate with increased testing of aluminum that we can easily accommodate. And please see the attached letter where they thanked us very much for bringing the guidelines down to where they should be. I think I have that here. Dear Mayor and Council, the Water Security Agency recognizes that the city's water workers, operators have been working diligently to optimize the water treatment plant process in response to some higher-than-expected levels of aluminum in the treated water, leaving the water treatment plant. The ongoing optimization has brought the level of aluminum in the treated water within the range of the operational guidelines. The Health Canada O.G. for aluminum of .1 milligram per liter was established to minimize the potential for accumulation of the metal in the distribution system, the maximum acceptable concentration for aluminum of 2.9 milligrams per liter. Both limits are evaluated as running annual average of test results. So we have met the necessary guidelines, and future monitoring requirements will be reassessed at the time of permit renewal. The WSA commends the city's waterworks operators, and we would like to take this opportunity to thank our people as well for addressing the elevated aluminum levels in the treated drinking water, and will continue to support the city in their efforts to optimize their water treatment process. So kudos to our people. They've brought those aluminum levels down to where they should be. So did we get the motion on that? I'm talking far too much, City Clerk. Could we have a motion on that report? Thank you, Counselor Sernick, seconded by Counselor Ford. I get wrapped up in my ratings sometimes. I excuse myself for that. All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Next, under executive reports, we have the building official, building permits for November of 2022. Could we have a motion, please, for that? Thank you. We have a motion. Thank you, Counselor Clark. Have we got a second? Counselor Ford, thank you. Ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Next, under introduction of bylaws, we have Bylaw 2022-2065, Investment of Health Levy. And tonight, City Clerk, I guess we want to give it first, second, and third rating, correct?
Correct.
Because time is tight before Santa comes, and we want to have this wrapped up. So we will request first reading of the Bylaw of the City of Estevan to provide for the investment of the health levy collection and held for the funding of a new nursing home. Whereas under the authority of Section 132 of the Cities Act, the city may only invest its money in investments authorized by the municipality's investment policy. Whereas the purpose of this bylaw is to authorize the investing of money collected and held for the construction of a new nursing home in the city of Estevan in the amount of 1.3 million, with the Royal Bank of Canada Securities for a three-year term at 4.75%. So we want to take advantage of the high interest rates right now and earn a little bit of extra money. Whereas the money will be invested in accordance with the City of Estevan Investment Policy Therefore, the Council of the City of Estevan, in council, assembled hereby and acts as follows: The amount of money being invested to be 1.3 million. The terms of this loan will be a three-year amortization period with an interest rate of 4.75%. This rate may fluctuate with the market. So we're asking for first, second, third reading tonight, and we'd like to thank our staff, the city manager, the city treasurer, for bringing that to our attention. And while it's sitting there, we might as well make good money on it. So do we have a motion this evening, first reading, for Bylaw 2022-2065 to provide for the investment of the health levy collection and held for the funding of a new nursing home? Counselor Frank, thank you. Have we got a second or? Counselor Ford, thank you. Ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie? Now I will ask for second reading of Bylaw 2022-2065, a bylaw for the City of Estevan to provide for the investment of the health levy collected and held for the funding of a new nursing home. Thank you, Counselor Wallyser. Thank you, Counselor Clark, seconded. At this point, second reading, I'll ask for questions or comments. Counselor Frank?
Thank you, Worship. I just wanted to just make sure there's some clarification out there, just 'cause I know I'd had one quick question about this, was just that this is not new money that we're collecting. This is the money we have, you kind of, little, little bit too, but this is money we have already collected over the last number of years for the new nursing home. And while we're waiting for it to be built, which we'd like to be any minute now, we're gonna try to earn some interest on the money that's sitting in our checking account instead, so that's a way to do it.
Absolutely. Thank you, Counselor Frank. And those of us that were, have started on that fundraising committee, I think it's close to 20 years now.
We're gonna build it before you need to be in there, Roy.
Well, I hope so. I hope so. Hopefully, that will happen. Counselor Ford, you don't have to laugh. Did you have your hand up?
Counselor Frank took my comment about this money's already been collected, not the other part, the collected money part.
Okay, thank you. You weren't going to be inflammatory, I knew you were.
We'll, we'll at least hope it's built before I need to be in it. How about that?
Exactly. We could hope, but I'm sure it will be, Counselor Frank, because you're pretty young. Okay, go ahead, Counselor Clark.
Thanks, Worship. Do we know when they announce that, when we're expected to provide our money? Is it during construction or is it prior? Do we know?
Well, we'd like to take this opportunity to thank our MLA. I know Minister Carr is working hard on getting this done sooner than later. We're now meeting with the province and starting to go through the hoops of what the building design looks like, what the size will look like, how many beds. Although we were already done with all that, now we will be doing that again. So, you know, meeting those parameters, going through all of that, will probably take, we're thinking, before we get a shovel in the ground, at least two years, maybe a bit longer. So I think it might be timely. And the Royal Bank, with whom we have this invested, I think if we needed the money a little bit sooner, City Manager, I think we would even have that opportunity to pull it out if we needed it a little bit sooner. Is that not right?
Thank you, Worship. Yeah, there was options about people that buy out terms on GIC, so if it was required at a certain point, there could be that option to withdraw it. But we would look at that when we get there.
Yeah. I'm sorry to say, but because it's been around 20 years, we think that we might be safe with this before we actually start the building. But, you know, if we're proven wrong, we're fine with that. Counselor Vroba?
Thank you, Worship. I think you pretty much just clarified. This is a guaranteed investment. We're not at risk for losing
Absolutely.
The 1.3 million. We will just hopefully make 4.75% interest. But also the fact that Wayburn, I think even had a picture with a shovel near the ground or almost entering the ground for their hospital, and it's still not yet started. I think we're pretty confident that the three-year investment
Yeah, that was what, 10 years ago, yeah.
I think it was just last year, maybe.
Oh, okay.
It feels like 10 years, yes.
Sometimes it feels longer.
Hopefully, by doing this, it will actually mean that we do have to pull it out earlier, and we do get to start in the nursing home early.
Absolutely. And let me stress, this was not invested in Bitcoin, okay? I just want to say that. Okay, are we ready for the question? All in favor of second reading? Thank you very much. Okay, now I will ask for a third reading.
Study, study be waived, please.
Oh, that study be waived, and that we do third reading at this meeting, and then adoption for use of Bylaw 2022-2065, a by
Three separate readings.
Three separate readings, yes. We're going into the third reading, City Clerk.
Three separate motions.
Three separate motions.
Study be waived.
Okay, first off, I'm sorry. Thank you, City Clerk.
Don't do that anymore.
Okay. First, we need a motion that the study be waived, okay? The referral of this bylaw, we're not going to put it to committee or for study. We need all of that waived. So at this juncture, we'll need the motion to waive that. Counselor Frank, thank you, seconded by Counselor Sernick. Ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie? Now we can make the motion that the bylaw be given three readings at this meeting, because, as we all know, usually we refer this to the public for their discourse, bring it back after a month or so, and then give it final reading. But tonight, we're gonna, we want to make this interest. So we'll need a motion now that third reading be given at this meeting. Okay, Counselor Sernick, seconded by Counselor Clark. How are we doing so far, City Clerk? Are we covered? We're covered or out?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, for third and final reading and adoption for use of Bylaw 2022-2065, a bylaw for the City of Estevan to provide for the investment of the health levy collected and held for the funding of a new nursing home. Could we have that motion, please? Counselor Sernick, seconded by Counselor Ford. Ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, thank you very much. Got through her. Thank you, City Clerk, for coming to my rescue. Okay, next, this evening, public hearings and reports, we have none this evening, giving notice, we have none this evening. Motion from committee, we have none. Considerations of bylaws, we have none. Inquiries, Counselor Vroba?
I have none this evening.
Oh my goodness, my heart be still. Counselor Vroba, I don't think I've ever heard that comment. God bless you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you for that. Counselor Clark?
Nothing tonight, Your Worship.
Nothing either? Okay, thank you, Counselor Clark. Counselor Wallyser?
Thank you, Your Worship. Just a reminder that the Festival of Lights is set to begin this weekend, that they'll be hosting a big event with hot dogs and hot chocolate down at Woodlawn, and that there will be fireworks at dusk before the lights open.
Thank you so much for the reminder. That'll be a great event. Please bring the family down and take in that entertainment. Counselor Ford?
Thanks, Your Worship. I'm pretty excited the girls got some, some money for the ball diamond, so that's my, my happy thing for the day.
Yes, you're a big ball player, so that's great.
But Counselor Sernick and I, on Friday, we attended a Christmas party in Regina. We were invited by the Saskatchewan Media Production Industry Association to attend their, their annual Christmas party. We had written them a letter of support, I think about a year ago now, and supporting them building a new facility in Regina. It's a great state-of-the-art facility that's being built for their media production, and they, they're, they're gonna be able to film movies like, I'm not saying they're going to do it, but they, they can film movies as big a scale as Star Wars was, basically. So it was really nice to be able to attend that. They, they were greatly appreciative of us for doing that, and we actually made a, we made some good contacts and networked with a lot of good people. And hopefully, maybe one day, they, you know, take a look at Estevan to have a movie there.
Absolutely.
Also, the Rotary Carol Festival, congratulations to the Rotary Club, City Manager and Your Worship, for, for putting that on. It was a very, very great, great event, and it was really nice to be back in person for that. It was good to go to that. And just, there's lots of places looking for volunteers this season, lots of people looking for, you know, Salvation Army's looking for people to ring their bells, a lot of people just looking for people to help out with things. And we had a, we had a big loss in our community on Friday. So I think in the spirit of, of Mel, we all take the time to, you know, spend some time in the community and really take the time to volunteer and use our time appropriately.
Thank you so much for that, Counselor Ford. And yes, that's a huge loss in, in our community with Mel Pearson passing. You know, our hearts go out to the family, our condolences and prayers, and that is a huge loss. Thank you for that. Counselor Sernick?
Thank you, Worship. Counselor and Clark got a, and I attended the Legion Past Presidents, I do believe it was called, the supper. It was a great evening. It reminded me, as they were listing their accomplishments from last year, the importance of the Legion in our community. And more importantly, they invited council to host Bingo Night in the New Year. So 6:45 on Thursdays, we will work together and come up with something there. Counselor Clark, I'm sure will call the bingo for us. And we'll, we'll have a gig all the time. And then, lastly, and sadly, I'd like to acknowledge the life of Melody Pearson as well. She always brought a kick-ass attitude. She was the ultimate hockey mom, and she was a pillar of our community that will be missed. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Sernick, and thank you both for attending on my behalf in Regina. Thank you. Counselor Frank?